We are opening the Board of Selectmen's meeting. Open session, public meetings are subject to being videotaped. Your image and voice may be recorded, but you guys know that.
Mm-hmm.
We have, for approval, open session minutes for September 14th and September 21st. All were present for those.
Yep.
To approve?
Yep.
Yes.
Second?
So moved.
Okay.
Second.
All right. Any comments or questions?
Nope.
Hearing none, I'll take a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. No, that's okay. I took the yups on, but you decide to mean, you know, motion and second. All right. We have approval of an updated subsidized housing inventory report to DHCD.
That's the last for Berlin Woods.
Okay. And... Those are the Dudley Road ones, right?
Yes. First, pay the Dudley Road.
Okay. There are 32 units and eight are affordable.
I'll never catch up. Where... Do you know where we are at this point on percentage?
Eloise is trying to.
Affordable? No?
I don't have that number. I know Eloise is trying to get an updated handle on it.
I think it's like somewhere like six or seven, but no.
Yeah, it's under six, I think.
Yeah.
It's five and change.
Okay. So we're just submitting...
Does that include not booked two?
Not yet.
No.
Not yet.
No.
It was on and then they took it off, right?
Yeah.
Because it...
The building permit.
The building permit.
COs didn't issue.
It went out for two years beyond the building permit. Okay. So this is just a request for the new units there, adding eight. A motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Any comments or questions?
Nope.
Okay. Hearing none. I'll take a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We have our budget, annual budget letter. People taking a look at it?
I just saw it tonight as I walked in.
Pretty much what we have. You want me to just go over it? I might as well.
Yeah.
I hope I sent it to you this time.
Yeah, I read it. I got it a couple days ago.
Thursday before I set the agenda. Actually, I was setting the agenda, said, oop, I need to do a draft letter and whip one up. Can we double check that?
Okay. Well, why don't I go through it?
Sure.
These are the broad principles in establishing a compensation policy. We've been guided by the following principles. Maintenance of staff and service levels, provision of step raises and cost of living adjustments in a way that's consistent with the economic conditions and the town's ability to meet expenditures on a sustainable basis and effective management of revenue, capital and operating costs. Considerations that we take into account are the Consumer Price Index for the greater Boston area. We use the end of September because that's the quarter that is available at the beginning of the budget process, and that was three tenths of 1 percent this year. Every one half a percent of COLA adds approximately $5,300 to the budget, and any step raises given across the board historically adds up to about $13,500.
Just so some of the people watching Tom don't... COLA is the cost of living increase that's...
Cost of living adjustment. So every one half of 1 percent is $5,300. So... Three tenths would be somewhere in the vicinity of what, $2,700? $3,000? These recommendations rely on current projections of estimated growth in revenues of the town that suggest no compelling reason to reconsider our lower increases that are aligned with established policies. In light of this, we're recommending for fiscal year '17 step increases for eligible employees and a 3 percent cost of living adjustment for employees covered by the Personnel Classification spreadsheet. Any adjustments other than the COLA for hourly and salaried workers not on the Personnel Classification spreadsheet, whether or not subject to contract, should be considered by their department head or appointing authority as per the budget process.
Does this... Doesn't that mean three tenths of 1 percent?
It does. Did I state that differently?
Oh, you said 3 percent. So it's three tenths of 1 percent.
Three tenths of 1 percent. Sorry if I misspoke.
No problem.
All right. We have...
So are we recommending step increases? I didn't think we took a vote on that.
Oh, okay. I actually thought we had, but we can do that. Do you want to take a vote to issue this guidance as set out, which would include the recommendation for step increases?
I would move that we adopt this guidance paper that you just read.
Second.
Any other comments or questions? Hearing none. I'll take a vote. All those in favor? Next, we have a couple of complaints of dog complaints. And... They've been requested to hold a hearing on these.
So should I... A computer generated those old Hobson form forms that we used to use to sign off and ask the ACO or dog officer to do an investigation. So that would be the first step?
Yep.
And then, does the bylaw have a notice period requirement? I haven't... We don't do...
Don't know the timeframe. I do know if she returned with that.
I think it used to have a sheet with all the...
I think you pulled up the last one, which was from 2010.
That was this one, actually.
Same people, different dog.
Okay.
It's two dogs before, this time it's one dog.
I vaguely remember that hearing and...
Oh, yeah, I remember it.
We just entirely changed the dog bylaw.
Yep.
Was that before I was on?
2010.
Yes, 2010. Yeah. At the last hearing, we required the dog should be restrained by a physical fence when the people went out home. An invisible fence will be maintained and in use when the dogs are on the property, regardless of whether you're home or not. When off the property, the dog shall be in the presence and under the control of an adult at all time. And the physical fence was to be in place within 30 days of the...
You're reading the 210?
Yeah. That was just the result of the 210 hearing.
So this is different dogs?
First of all, the new bylaw doesn't... It is different dogs this time.
Oh, it's a different bylaw?
It's a new... This, yeah, this first law after bylaw, it doesn't say... What Peg said is that there's no newspaper posting, although it probably put on Facebook. But after the ACO returns with her written recommendations, then I copy both the complainant and the dog owner by certified mail and tell them of your hearing date.
Okay. Okay.
If you want to see it.
So therefore, what we are voting on now is to direct the animal control officer and dog officer to investigate the complaint and to file a report with us. And after we have that report, we can schedule a hearing. We have to notice by certified mail, but we don't have a particular notice period. So the vote tonight is to request the investigation of these two complaints.
I shall move.
Second.
Okay. Any other comments or questions? All right. Hearing none. We'll take a vote. All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
I want something besides, you know, like one of those fenceless fences between real old mastiffs.
You do?
Which is what we're talking about.
That was your order in 2010.
It was via physical fence.
And I believe Larry checked.
Yeah.
Oh, and found a fence? Well, just to make sure that there was a fence going up. I thought Larry checked. Maybe in an open forum, 2010, that there was no fence. Well, if we find out there's a complaint, then I think we should send Larry out to make sure that there is a fence. Do you want me to ask him to do that too? Right?
Well, the dog officer can do that too.
Okay. Yeah, I guess so.
Yeah, that could be part of the investigation, since it's in Larry had to do the same thing.
Okay.
Okay. Next, we have... We approved this contract, the architect's contract, didn't we, last week?
Yeah, you did. But you said to hold it until we had their original signature. So we have an original signature from them now.
Yeah.
I just wanted to double check with you before I sent it out.
Yep. No, that's fine. So we have... We've executed it, and we have an original signature from them.
That's their wedding copy on the top and...
We might as well both sign it, because we only had a photocopy before.
So that'll be our original.
So I'm just signing this again. We're not voting again. Yep.
And we're just going to send them the other one, right? Let them execute the wrong... Okay.
I have to initial a couple of changes here. Yep. Go ahead. I can listen while I'm initiating the changes.
Number six, approval of ASABET collaborative request for winter use of town offices.
Well, wait, wait, wait. We need to do the National Grid.
Yeah. We have one more.
Oh, I'm sorry. I didn't see that.
Yep.
Okay. National Grid MOU, refer renewable energy component of town.
Actually, it sounds like a very good deal for the town.
Yes. There was an email that explained it.
Yeah.
It's pinned to it, I believe, the back.
Okay.
Want me to get it up?
No, I can get it out from the back. Okay. National Grid offers building owners and architects a variety of incentives in the form of financial grants and design resources. Design resources such as energy modeling to assist the effort to meet and implement energy efficiency in new commercial buildings. They offer design resources to the owner and the design team at no costs, and they've been offered by National Grid in connection with the municipal town highway department. This is an... This is an MOU. And I'll indicate the owner incentives that are contained in it. National Grid will reimburse the owner based on estimated energy savings performance and will be paid upon completion of construction of the building and operational verification by National Grid. National Grid will pay the owner of the building a performance-based incentive of point of 35 cents per kilowatt hour and $1.70 per thermal unit, I believe that is for heat, for estimated savings associated with the approved screened measures up to the full incremental cost of the measures. The architect estimates that this incentive will be paid to the town of Berlin, could be upwards of $60,000. National Grid requires the team meet to facilitate an energy efficient design, don't pay $3,000 to the architect who will be responsible for paying the rest of the design team members. And they will offer an incentive to the design team, which is... Definition of it, for energy savings performance of 7 cents per kilowatt hour per incremental design and engineering costs associated with selected measures. And that's capped at $15,000. So it seems like... And I was in such a signing mood once I actually understood what it was that I signed it, but I wanted it to be ratified here tonight.
Just to make the way it's on it.
Okay?
I so moved that we...
Second.
All right. Any further comments or questions?
None.
Nope.
Hearing none, I'll take a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. Our schedule starts at 7:30, so we'll start promptly at that. And if that's okay?
Yes. I'm expecting more members, so.
All right.
But we could start...
All right. At 7:30, we'll... Okay. Okay. Approval of ASABET collaborative request for winter use of town offices for a vocational program. You want to tell us about this?
A girl whose name escaped me visited to say that right now, there's about a half a dozen wheelchair-bound students of the ASABET Valley Collaborative who bag... They did try to find programming for them that's outside of the school to give them a change of setting. So they have been working out a Berlin garage a couple days a week, bagging food for the No Kill Kitty Shelter.
The Berlin highway...
The kitty kibble thing?
The highway?
No, a Berlin garage, not the Berlin garage. A Berlin garage. But now that the winter's coming upon us, there's no heat in that garage. So they're looking for weekday morning heated space, preferably here on this floor possibly, as wheelchair accessible for the six kids to come and work, supervised, assisted. They bring their own supplies and they'd leave. It would be the winter months. And then in the spring, they go back to this residence in town to do their...
So what will they be doing here?
Bagging large bags of dog food into, uh, kibble... Into smaller bags.
Smaller gallon bags for distribution.
Right.
So it's just like nine to 12 or something every morning?
Nine thirty to 11.
Monday, Tuesday, Friday.
Monday, Wednesday and Friday.
What is the purpose of that?
It's to give them vocational training so that they can...
Bagging dog food is vocational training?
I'm not sure what else it entails. I'm not sure if it's just that.
Well, it says they collect and donate pet food, leashes, harnesses, treats.
The whole program.
And clothes for homeless pets and their families.
So there are some Berlin students in the program. It wouldn't all be Berlin students. And it's presently being done in a Berlin home.
So do they clean up?
They clean up. Yep.
Are you winding up to come out against homeless pets, Walter?
I'm not going to. I just...
Because if you want to, go ahead.
Who started this? Whose idea was this?
Well, the ASABET Valley Collaborative is an educational group.
Right.
Yeah, but somebody had to call them up and ask them to do... No, I... Never mind. I just...
Collaborative?
No comment.
It's the ASABET Valley Collaborative.
That's rally-wise.
No.
Oh, it has... It's not the vocational...
No, it's not the VOTAC. It's the collaborative, which is special education.
Oh, okay. All right. Okay. I would take a motion to approve this use.
I... All right. Well, I'll second it.
Or you can move it.
Or move it. I'll move it.
Do you want to second it? Or do you want... All right. I'll second it.
So my... I guess my question is, are we going to tell Mary to be not in charge of it, but to...
It's no different than any of the room reservations that I already do. I mean, Boy Scouts, soccer, different groups that do ask for the use of the municipal offices. And I schedule the room use.
Is this for special needs?
Yes.
Oh, okay. That puts a whole smooth spin on it.
That's what the ASABET Valley Collaborative is.
Okay. Okay.
All right.
Get them something to do, sure.
Okay.
Get them self-training.
Okay. Give it a try. And the little conference room, not the boardroom, but across the hall, she said it's perfect size. It's not too big.
Okay. That's great.
It's fine. Okay.
That's great. Okay. Any further comments or questions? Hearing none. I'll take a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
I still... I didn't get a chance to review those ASABET things, so...
I missed the whole initial, what the purpose was.
Oh, okay. Yeah, no, it's fine. I guess we can jump in, because we've got a couple things left, but I think each of those may take a little longer than two minutes to deal with. You guys want to come up? I think we're close, unless you're waiting for somebody else?
No.
No.
Get started.
Okay.
I hope Dave makes it. I didn't hear.
See him coming?
We have copies.
I know. I sent it ahead of them. There are years I sometimes get a few things ahead, just going to say, hey, if you have it ahead of them, she included a packet, they include a book at it. It's just your '17 budget season.
Yes.
Yay!
Seems like fiscal year '16 just started.
And it's a Monday, my favorite day of the week and my favorite day of the year.
And so this is sort of how it gets kicked off, is our sort of presentation of everything that keeps FinCom awake at night, so that we can keep you guys awake at night as well. I think the first surprise for us is that it looks like new growth might return back to its sort of pre-development, massive development today. Now, we do have a new assessor, and so she could also be more conservative and, you know, also doesn't have the years of history that Diane has, and so we can always hope that number goes up. But the number she gave me is to start with is about $90,000 compared to a half million dollars for last year.
The restaurant, the liquor store?
Yeah, you've got Maurice.
But I don't think anything for River Bridge is included in that number either.
No.
No.
Probably wise.
And so, you know, if that takes off, or if we really get some of the things they're talking about still, the number can go up. I mean, it's a preliminary number, and it can go up if necessary. I did very quick math to come up with how much warrant levied of it. I'll do some more in a little bit. I can't imagine we would try to absorb all of that, because that just would be evil, I think. Although, yeah, as I said, just because we could technically use that money doesn't mean...
You might want to use some of it to put into stabilization.
Right. We... And so in the... Do I not enter? I thought I said something in here about stabilization. Maybe I meant... Oh, yes. When it comes to warrant articles, you know, this year, we don't have money to take out of stabilization. In fact, you're right, we probably will look at trying to find money to put into stabilization. We did use free cash to fund a couple of warrant articles this current fiscal year, and so we're likely, if it's available and for smaller items, it might be worthy of looking at again for fiscal year '17. We do have, as you know, three very large items that we'll also be looking at debt. It could be one of the ways we handle that sort of surplus levy capacity, is we might explore doing the debt and not putting it as an exclusion. I still would like to time the debt so that the first sort of real payments come the first year we're no longer making payments on this part, so there's not either a spike for one year in tax rates or a dip where we have no debt for a year or so.
What is the status of Toronto? They haven't... They haven't done final bonding yet, have they?
No.
No. We're expecting that number to go up this year as well. And so if you think that if we only have about $300,000 to play with, if you add 2.5 percent for the schools and add 10 percent for health insurance and add the police officers that we already have and add the added amount for ASABET, we're already over the $320,000. And so... And that's before we start incorporating anything related to the Public Safety Plan, which likely there'll be costs associated with that. And so I expect us to have a tough year of finding a way to make all the numbers fit the Rubik's Cube of the budget to come out in a way that makes everybody happy.
That levy doesn't include the public safety mitigation money?
It does not, but we've been spending it about as it comes in, and so there is some money there that we could be using as well. And we'll likely use for some expenses, but it's also, we have a lot of equipment stuff there that we'd like, that's probably good to pay off at least some debt on. I don't think we... I know we won't have a million dollars even if we ended up doing another fire truck. There won't be a million dollars in the fund to pay for it this year anyway, so...
No, I was thinking more in terms of a new fire rescue chief for public safety money.
Yeah, that's a balance of that money. If we use all of it for the public safety personnel, we don't have it to use for the capital stuff that is also on it. But there is a half million dollars, and so it's not that it all has to go to one or the other. There's a... There'll be a balance into it. And, you know, our general goal is hopefully at some point, we don't use it every year, so it does build up, so that potentially 15 or 20 years now, when we need another big fire truck, we might be able to pay for it out of cash. It's always the... The problem with doing things, if we can find a way to save up for it ahead of time and not have to pay debt costs, would be better. Just not always possible. Then I, without having to go down the numbers, I think we've actually hit most of these. The COLA, you guys just... I saw a note on it.
Three tenths of 1 percent.
Okay. So that's not going to be a lot.
I did round it up.
Good.
Some people got three cents.
I know. It's sometimes that one tenth of 1 percent doesn't sometimes always make a giant... It's for an individual, it's one of those things, it does make a big difference for an individual person when you add it up among all the employees, it does end up costing money. The communication center moved, there could be some savings there, although there could be savings in the communication department and end up hurting somewhere else, haven't heard what we're planning on doing as a town for securing this building when there's not 24/7 staff in it.
I think there's... I think there's a lot of grant money, that a lot of these costs are going to come through Nishova.
Yeah. And that the operating costs could be slightly less than we've been paying now, so there could be some savings there.
I believe the sort of initial estimates with no replacement, you know, of anything which is not... Are around $70,000 or $75,000. But clearly, you have to do something to have somebody there some of the time and so on, so...
Yeah. And the public safety side, there's an admin person for the fire and admin person for police. And so, you know, if those are of course added costs. And in a town that's not known for having a lot of admin support anywhere. But that, again, that's one of the... That's one of the shoes are waiting to drop before you have a really sense of where the budget is going to come out.
Yeah. And I think, you know, in talking with the chiefs, you know, as a group and individually, as I say, really, you know, they're looking to deal with the issue of administrative support, to deal with having a presence there during some hours of the week, because it's, you know, it's sort of a vital connection to the town for various things. And generally, looking at them as more sort of a community service, admin officer as opposed, you know, to a dispatcher and sort of back billing along those lines. And as I say, it seems like if we were to plow all of the savings back, we would, you know, and basically have, you know, a package of services for the same cost, my... And as I say, it seems like if we were to plow all of the savings back, we would, you know, and basically have, you know, a package of services for the same cost, my understanding is we'd have about seventy or seventy-five thousand dollars to spend on that.
Good. The schools we've already had, one brief meeting with, we actually have scheduled already our joint meeting for budget, which we've not typically had this time of year, it's our continued efforts between ourselves and the schools to sort of keep the budgeting focus and timeliness. And so we're doing a joint meeting in February, I think it's like the seventeenth or something like that, where we're doing a joint school board and, and committee to go over their budget stuff.
Well, I do, do have to say that I was annoyed at seeing that they're going to fund a twenty to forty thousand dollar regionalization financial study out of their school choice money.
Yes, I, I, I saw that as well, and I've not sent an email over on it, but that, I thought I already heard that school choice was very slim, and they got to cut some of it back, and so it seems odd that they then, on the next PR thing that go out says, because there's surplus in it, and...
Yeah.
And actually, I was going to talk to FinCom, but that, now that we have sort of these low new growth numbers, whether or not it's worthy of sending an email to the schools, about really that we probably won't be able to do much about the two and a half percent increases, 'cause that's really, we have two and a half percent, that's what the, and try to keep them to some of that. I know Julie said that they're, they're ahead of where they normally are on budget stuff, they started earlier, you know, be able to get us some stuff earlier on. Nadine has already, I'm sorry, a lot of a couple of new special needs students and what their costs might be to the district, and what impact that might have. Until we actually see a dropped budget, we don't know for sure. At least we have sort of meetings scheduled earlier than we've had in the past, and a joint meeting already scheduled, that even if the number is out of line, we'll have more time to react and adjust, and, and come to some sort of an agreement that's good for both the students and for the taxpayers. And then, and my last point actually on this is actually not, quite so, was just that we have over the last couple of years done a bunch of adjustments to department head salaries to put them in line with surrounding towns. I think we have done a serious chunk of that, I'm not, I don't know, there's not on the top of my head that I could come up with, or that FinCom could come up with, that we are expecting any significant changes out there.
Just the fire rescue change?
Right, which is as much a new position and a combination of stuff. We've even had some increases in those areas, so that the gap between what everyone is earning right now, what we think the new potential joint chief would need to make is smaller than it might otherwise have been, had we not made some of those adjustments.
Yep.
Scott, just the conservation commission, we're talking about funding last week, now we've got over seven hundred thousand currently, and we're working on two large acquisitions, and we'll still have money left over if we get good reimbursement from the state. But if we don't, and we still, we're looking at five large farms that we would like to keep going, and a large hundred acre piece key to existing parcels of land, and there's been some noise lately from people concerned about another parcel that's up for sale. So, we would probably be requesting some sort of bonding issue or something, talk with the selectmen about it, and start thinking about what's gonna happen after the Highland Commons and Solomon Pond Mall to date are gone, the fifty grand a year, you know, really won't touch what we, what we think we need to do. And this will be all after a public hearing on the kind of land we want and everything else, but we probably would be looking for something in there. Just, I just thought I'd let you know at this point.
Do you, you think it may be time to take another run of the Community Preservation Act into hand?
Anything that would help, you know?
Well, I mean...
Yeah, I, I should look into...
It did not lose by much the last time that it was up, it was very close.
Yeah. We've lost opportunity for a similar amount of money by not voting that in when we could've. I'll, I'll get the updated figures on that, but that was a lost opportunity for sure. But we, I'm just, it's, right now it's kind of a vague, it's conceptual, and I'm not ready to give you the statistics and the figures on it, just an idea.
Man, I think where it goes, at least personally, when you do large projects, you know, where are there other funds out there, you know, grants, and other pieces?
We've done exceptionally well on reimbursement from the state and selling off a lot, a house lot or two, when it was necessary to cut cost in half by selling one house lot out of eighty-two acre parcel one time, so...
Yeah, and I think it's beyond just that, I mean, I'm thinking for the elevator eighteen seventy town hall, you know, where it can outside funds, not just the rent, but, you know, whether it's a grant, or, or is the, is the town, I haven't talked to them about this, but, you know, do we say that we'll put up half the money, we vote out even though they don't have the other half yet, so they can use that as a fundraising levy to say, look, if we can go with half of it, the town won't pitch in the other half? Or, you know, where other towns are getting grants for fire equipment, where there are not, there are grants out there that can help us?
Yeah, and they actually did believe that they, they did have a grant there, right here a couple of weeks ago.
They're going for a grant, yeah. Well, we got forty...
The schools have done great with their boiler on, and a hundred and eighty thousand or so towards that, so we get some great modern technology in the schools, and it will save some operating budgets of a long time.
We'll see. Well, we, we did get forty-four thousand back from FEMA on the snow and salt last week from last year's exceptional snow.
Yep.
Are we getting back, I'm sorry, are we getting back money on that boiler where the amount that came in, plus what we gave them, would go up to two hundred thousand?
Well, the state's paying seventy-five, seventy-five percent, and they feel that they have enough money to do the engineering and match the twenty-five percent.
Into seventy-five.
So the rest, the hundred and eighty they got was the seventy-five percent from the state.
Thought the total cost was two hundred?
Well, it was plus engineering.
Oh, plus engineering?
Plus engineering costs.
Right.
Yeah. Well, and, and I've talked with Scott, and we've discussed some of their building envelope issues, because even though I've had some work done over there, they still have issues like, you know, this is their ceiling, and hot air rises through drop ceilings.
Right.
There's no other, so, so...
In some offices more than others.
So, I've discussed, we have a grant, we got the grant for having an assessment done, so we'll probably do it on the school, and try to combine all that.
In terms of, we, we should know more in the next week or two, but I would not be surprised to see us coming in with sort of interim, you know, transition search expenses for the fire rescue in the forty-five K range, looking at, you know, a, an interim for six months and assistance in, in the search. But that, that's very preliminary, and I think that's probably high end from what I've, I've heard, but it could go as high as that.
They're gonna come in.
And, and we have to look at, you know, that's just a raw figure of expense, obviously, we had money in the budget for existing chiefs for the, you know, rest of the year, so we have to look at, you know, what the offsets are to that and everything. But raw costs, it could conceivably be right in that area.
And then we encouraged Board of Health to ask for reserve and transfer for the electrical upgrades at the transfer station, why, we asked Article Two to be pulled from the special town meeting. They have not actually approached us, and I haven't heard anything from them approaching you, but know that we've asked for it at some point, and I'm sure at some point they will run out of money and their expense line will go in.
You might send them an email.
Yeah.
And let them know that the bird of the ball's in their court.
Yep. I'll let Paul next time I see him, too.
Tom, is, are there a date that you know that Bruce is...
Yeah, they're retiring on the...
End of January.
End of January.
Oh, okay. He has to legally retire.
So, and so what we're, you know, what we're looking, when I gave you that figure, I was sort of calculating twenty hours, you know, a week for five and a half, six, six months of...
Sorry, what was the figure?
Forty-five.
Approximately forty-five thousand, that would be twenty hours. And again, that, that may be a high end figure, that was an interim, you know, received through a sort of consulting service, and we might be able to do better than that. But we also have to look at, you know, getting somebody in who can maybe even assist with the search, and, you know, the assessment of candidates and so on, so... And that, I came to that figure, figuring twenty, you know, twenty hours a week for five and a half months.
They're coming in next week?
Yeah, they are, and as I say, we'll have more detail, but as long as you're here, that, that's sort of very broad strokes.
One of you might wanna come to hear what is this, next week?
And then you're looking at a special town meeting at the end of November for public safety?
End of November, beginning of December, end of November now.
Well, November thirty, if you open the warrant next week and then close at the ninth.
Okay.
Yeah, so that would be, that's somewhere right around there, yes.
And then the payroll tax issue, has there been any movement on that, anything more, I mean, we have a substantial amount of town funds tied up in that warrant article, that it'd be great to release back to stabilization, take care of it, you have a comment?
Have you heard anything more, Dennis?
I have had to write the head of appeals, because they won't release the amount.
They won't tell you what we owe?
When I contacted the, the December amount that we knew about, they said that's all we owed, and I got a little excited, thinking something had happened. But the way it works is, when it's an appeal, it is taken off what you owe, so they have to release it back to the audit department before we can make the payment. So, should happen within a week, depending on a letter that...
We honor their...
That reminder, yes.
But like, the insurance company is gonna pay some of it, is...
They would pay a hundred if it's shown to be fraud.
Yeah, but that, they, don't, you know...
Right.
That's gonna be...
Don't put that in your wallet yet, because...
It'd take a long time.
And that, there would have, I mean, that's, you know, criminal...
Right.
You know, basically a theft of funds coverage, so there would have to be some result.
And the state's not done anything to lower the amount to...
They've, they've used penalties, which we expected them to do, and they were not very much.
They won't.
'Cause I thought I heard another town was having the representative introduce a bill that for this issue would waive for the towns affected by this, waive the interest and even some of the principal.
I haven't heard it.
What town is that?
Don't remember, when, when we last got a presentation, one of the arguments was that it could all go away because of bill that was being introduced, but I didn't get the...
Who presented, who was giving the presentation?
Was not with it.
I thought it was a joint meeting here, but, I don't...
There was legislature approach, but it wasn't...
I think maybe what we said, and there is one other town, it's Essex is another town, and then there are...
Retirement.
Uh, yes, county retirement boards, again, not, not the retirement funds themselves, the administrative payroll. And I think maybe what we said was it would require a bill in the legislature.
Have you asked our representative?
We've sent letters to both of them.
Our rep is abroad right now, but, I guess, I mean, I think we may have a small amount left over. Not a whole lot, but...
And so for the insurance, we'd still have to pay it all out ourselves, and then it's waiting for the insurance to reimburse us, not like the insurance pays.
It's waiting for the criminal investigation to come to a point where we can, we can claim as a, as a theft of funds, so it's not paying out.
Right.
It's...
Do we have to wait for them to come to trial, or just...
I think they'd have to be convicted.
Yeah, it would have to, it would have to go to trial, or it'd have to go, I mean, like a, some other thing, like a, no, contend day or something like that.
That's sounding like Christmas twenty thirty, if it's appealed, etc.
And so the gentleman who owned the company, do you know where he is these days, is he sitting in jail somewhere, has someone filed charges?
No, we, DOR referred it as, DOR...
DOR's criminal unit.
Is their criminal unit, and they are working with the, the state attorney general in a criminal investigation, that's what we know. And they are not, you know...
Last time I talked to them, they're not...
They're not giving away anything.
It's a big investigation, involves a lot of clients, and there was also another payroll company they were working on.
Right.
So, the Harpers.
Yeah.
So...
We have Harpers now, don't we?
A hundred and forty something cities and towns still, yes.
We have ADP now.
No, we have Harpers. We dumped to ADP because they were...
Harpers.
Ask Dennis about ADP.
Well, I understand the owners of Harpers have had a problem with not paying their taxes.
Corporate taxes for companies.
Paying himself big money.
There was no, there's been no allegation of a misuse of client...
But it makes you wonder, because, right, the character.
Are they bonded?
Must be something about that.
It's insurance, but that's kind of a, that's one of the items we wanted to talk to the legislature about, requirements for anyone who's qualified to be a tax agent.
To be bonded.
It's crazy that they don't have to be bonded.
That is crazy.
Yeah. Yeah, because the municipal employees for whom they're acting as agent are required to be bonded, so...
Other questions?
So, the bottom line on that is, that's what could help us in this budget cycle, in case we didn't get that.
I wasn't imagining.
Alright.
Sorry, Chris, to point out that I went over the letter, the Cadillac tax penalties for our health insurance plan, are we working on trying to change the plan so that we might get out from not having to pay?
Those, FYI...
Yes, but it's about a five hundred dollar difference, five hundred and eighty-three, I think I sent you a copy of it, for employee, so we're looking at a forty to fifty thousand dollar penalty in seventeen, if the Republicans don't get it.
I don't think that, I don't think that penalty, if I understood it correctly, I don't think that penalty applies until eighteen.
Yeah, I think seventeen, they'll look at it.
Well, sixteen, you're given a waiver for making mistakes, and on top of the Cadillac tax is also an error ta, uh, penalty.
Well, we have a, we have to now negotiate with the unions.
Sure.
Well, we have to negotiate, but we, we have a committee that has to happen. And I believe to get under that, you'd either have to increase your copayments, or...
Play with the drug payment.
Play with the drug payments to get it down.
Those are two things that are bumping, I'm sorry.
Right.
Yeah, into the...
Yeah, and the third one would be deductible, which is really going down the road to...
Right, and, and all of those things, if we done them, would also lower the cost of health insurance to the town, so that by, by getting in compliance or getting underneath, so we don't have to pay the cadillacs, also lowers our cost of health insurance. And so it is a, probably a hundred, a hundred and fifty thousand dollar swing if we can do it right, and so it's trying to make sure we don't miss opportunities and cost, I mean, that could make the difference with this budget, working or not working, is, is large numbers like that.
It's negotiation with groups that you would be putting higher costs on them.
We would, yes.
That's, that's really the end game, is that, for us to lower it, you have to...
And let's go over the dates again, it becomes effective...
The penalty itself would be in eighteen, sixteen, there are, I'm sorry, not the penalty, but the Cadillac tax, the...
Would be in calendar year eighteen.
Correct.
So it would impact us for half of fiscal year seventeen.
Well, if you're on a fiscal year, there's a different, yes, there's a different deadline than people usually in private industry that are on the calendar year budgets.
So, and I just wanna be sure that the tax...
Fiscal year eighteen.
It would be fiscal year eighteen, that's what I wanted to be sure, was whether it was calendar year eighteen, and therefore would affect us through half of fiscal year seventeen.
Just half, but through the whole, tonight.
So it is, it is only until, so we have until the eighteen budget to correct this.
Right, and we now have to demand that all pay relate to ours somehow, and that hasn't been the case in the past, especially for the schools, that's always been kind of a set amount. There's a few other positions, elected positions, where we really have to decide what are the official hours, because to determine full-time people... You have to use the part-time and divide it by, was it a hundred and fifty? And that's to keep people from putting all their employees under thirty hours. Because this is based on thirty hours, not on twenty hours.
Right.
We do that for our benefits en masse, but it's thirty for this program. So the estimates, we're estimated to track, we're doing better than most municipalities, the decade change from year to year. We're tracking at about eight percent increase, with the exception of dental. So it's something that.
So did you forward this to the insurance advisory committee?
Yes, Dave.
And to have, they have any meetings?
No.
Okay. Do you want me to?
I think we have to take the ball and just say, here's what we propose, because they want it spoon-fed to them.
Meet with you and go, when will you be able to get some different numbers on?
Well, actually, the rep from Maya wants to come out and talk to the group so they understand all the options. One of the things that we're comparing to is the plan that the state chose to be the base, and the state's having a really hard time with their costs. Their drug costs went up incredible last year, and I think they're in trouble again this year, from what I've heard through the grapevine. So the state's not doing well at all. So the plan they're comparing it to will probably go up in costs, so. But Maya will come out, they'll sit in a meeting, they'll go over all the options to the employees.
Well, maybe we should do a meeting next month with everyone and get it going, because it takes a while.
That would actually be helpful, because I'm in the early stage of the police union negotiation, and frankly, I'd, I'd, I'd thought we might not know enough, you know, that I would have to basically just negotiate a one-year term for health coverage and, you know, reviewing that. But it might be wise to have the union reps come in when Maya came in to explain.
Well, they're on the committee.
Oh, they are?
Yes, they're on the IAC committee.
So.
And we could even have Ross come out at the same time, have double coverage, just so.
Yeah.
The penalty part's the part that treasurer's, we've been to a couple seminars, and the penalty part, you have to clean up your data. And they have penalties for a missing social security number would cost the town, I don't have in front of me, sixty dollars. If you were a general.
Like filing a ten ninety-nine.
Exactly. So, and I guess the first year, they're gonna let you make a few mistakes if you show that you've tried to clean up your data. And then the second year can be, I believe it's seventeen. So we, we have a lot of work going on. Payroll companies are working with Maya to see who's going to generate, there's four reports that have to be done. Two are gonna be done similar to your W two, they'll need to be done by Maya or Harpers. It doesn't matter to us, they're gonna try to work it out. But there's two more that you can pay them to do, or do them yourself.
And we don't have any HIPAA problems with using the payroll company or anything like that now?
No.
Yeah, because for the most part, they're just saying that you had health coverage, so you're not sure.
Yeah. No, it just occurred to me while.
If we do that now, with your state, you know, you get that in the mail.
Right, from our system, it's gonna be confusing, because you're gonna get the one for the state taxes, it'll be a different form used for federal taxes, that will have similar information on it. My office is working on those same problems, and whether or not we're gonna do the reporting in-house, or have our payroll companies do it.
Okay.
There's an outside chance that Cadillac tax might be repealed, but I don't think that counts.
Well, that's.
It's, I'd call it twenty percent.
We have to plan like it's gonna happen.
I know, no, I'm just letting you know.
It would be sad, because a lot of efforts going into it.
Teachers, or is that not coming?
Well, the, the health insurance isn't in the teacher's contract.
Right.
So what we do now is, we do the insurance advisory committee where the teachers are on it and the police are on it, and, and work with them, because they have to know, I mean, I think that the whole thing is they have to know about it and make a recommendation, but we don't have to accept it. That's my understanding.
They'll probably want it to be made whole if they have something taken away, a benefit taken away, that.
Yeah, yeah.
You know.
Yep.
And the changes don't help the employees, we talked about that at our treasurer meetings, it's solely to help the town.
So about the tax?
Correct.
Yeah.
Yeah. I know in the law, right, budgets.
We're gonna have any money because of it.
Okay.
Yep.
Okay.
I have a few.
That was a cheering after that.
I have a few more things to go, unemployment, we're gonna go over budget for the first time that I can remember. It may continue if people leave downstairs, or however that rolls out. We're also watching Worcester County, Worcester Regional Retirement, because they're still trying to work up figures for catch-up. So that is something that could rear its ugly head. And I had a question about River Bridge, I think the penalty kicks in this December.
Yeah.
Not sure how it works, or if that fifty thousand, A, would be paid, and B, would that help with the budget?
We wouldn't mind.
It wouldn't help with the budget, because it would go into free cash, not certified to the end of this current fiscal year, it'll be available for town meeting in twenty seventeen.
Well, is it considered mitigation?
Uh, when I last asked, I was told no, it just goes directly to sort of free cash.
Well, do we even know how it's gonna be billed?
Like, who's gonna write the letter that says please guys fifty thousand dollars?
The timing, because right now, we do the mitigation from Highland Commons, January one, waiting for the, what?
I'd have to look, I'd have to look both at the agreement and that special article that we did.
I believe it was by November, if they hadn't built or started it by November, and it sounded like it was payable when we billed them.
What, he announced that the, that. He circled that occasion where they were going to be.
Pardon me?
That, that, on Monday, Chris announced that they would be starting the wastewater treatment plant within two days, is that considered starting the project? It's actually a foundation for the structure.
This is penalty for having a senior living facility.
Okay, okay, right.
So he can build everything else and build everything's planned, but if he doesn't do a senior living place.
Well, we changed it from senior living to brain trauma, or. Special meeting.
Right, we, we loosen, we loosen the definition, but a wastewater treatment plant and hotel would.
Doesn't cut it.
Would cut for that.
No.
And so, at least for this year, I don't think we have to debate whether or not, you know, it has to be open or just partially under construction, because I don't think we'll have started construction or pulled permits on it for this year. And in future years, we could look more at the legal stuff of like, does it have to be open, does it have to have permits pulled, does it have to have construction substantially done, you know, what's one of those?
Oh, words.
Yeah.
Did he say, go ahead.
Well, I was gonna say, I would rather that those apartments go in, so we get out under the forty B thing, but that's not gonna happen this year.
Did he say anything about that they've received, I mean, they were looking for financing for that treatment plan?
Yeah, they didn't mention that, just that they're gonna break ground on it at the Wednesday. I haven't driven by to notice whether they have. But they're putting that plant in, they must be assuming they're gonna use it.
Well, there was, there seemed to be a catch twenty-two.
They also said they were gonna start construction May two years ago, or two months after that, four months after that, and so saying they're going to start construction, I wouldn't believe, actually, I see.
Well, and then they said they couldn't get the hotel in until they had the water treatment, and they couldn't get the water treatment until they had the financing for the hotel. So if that's true, and they're actually gonna start the water treatment, then maybe the hotel would also start. And we could get our hotel tax.
Yeah.
Our rooms tax.
Gonna be a good, good income. The one-ten grill will provide us with a pretty good meals tax.
Well, that's certainly going under construction.
The other thing I had was, has anyone looked at overlay lately, or do we just wanna let it sleep?
Refund.
Overlay surplus, it's by the year, I don't think they've changed the law.
We haven't done anything in a while, and I might look at it at some point.
Twenty thousand of overlay.
Right.
Is for the senior, better work on. And I guess that we put that in for next year, too.
Yeah.
Seems to be working out.
All right.
Okay.
Well, thank you for our annual.
Pep talk.
Pep talk.
Yeah, thanks.
You got no money, don't go spending it.
Pretty much.
I'll just leave these, I did some borrowing scenarios, just so you're.
We set a reading.
I have to say that with the borrowing percentage, the fact that it stayed this low for so long, it's still.
It's under three percent.
Yeah.
There is a gap now between state house notes and long-term, whereas for the longest time, it was pretty much the same interest rate. Long-term is. Getting up into the low three, high two.
Yeah.
I think you're at two point five roughly for short-term, so it's not a.
Yeah.
Gel.
We have five members, we should be able to do it. Okay.
See what the open markets committee does.
Is that the day we weren't supposed to?
No, it's the eleventh, the day we were supposed to, but we can't be on the eleventh, because it's a holiday, so we have to be on the eighteenth. Because I'm assuming that the special town meeting will have some sort of warrant articles that have something to do with money.
Yes, and you're gonna have to find out where we're gonna fund them.
And if we've been certified with free cash, we at least might have free cash numbers and not to fund them, otherwise, I don't know what we're gonna do.
I can't get anything out of her, until she catches up.
Right.
Also, it looks like we won't have to borrow. If we can get the tax bills out, the rate's been approved, there was a plan to help the tax collector stuff bills. And we have about six hundred thousand in stabilization I could borrow internally. Schools have also agreed not to get their one-fifth payment plus the half for capital for a couple of weeks, which will help a lot, too.
So when do you think the tax bills are gonna go in?
It takes a week at the tax company that was at Point that generates them.
So, I mean, we can tell people on camera, the tax rate has been approved.
Correct.
Right.
So it's just a matter of the information going in the system and spitting the bills out now.
Yeah, there's a little process that plays with pennies, I know it sounds silly, but they have to go through that and make minor adjustments. And then it could take up to two weeks stuffing, depending on.
So two weeks from today?
After Thanksgiving, yes.
Two weeks from today, they might go out?
Call it three.
Three weeks.
You know, try to reduce it.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'll just look at my reading.
All right, next was the letter regarding Toronto's street traffic.
I read it.
Look who did me.
Okay, so move.
Second.
All right, any further comments or questions? All right, hearing none.
CCs are appropriate, do you want anybody else to be?
No, I thought those were.
Okay.
Yep, no more, no, no other comments or questions. Hearing none, take a vote, all those in favor, aye. Okay, the adoption of fifty-three F and three-quarters, remind me what this one is about?
That's the public access cable funds.
Okay.
And I understand that you and June didn't connect on it.
No, we talked about a lot of things.
I know. That has been done in several communities, I've been, I Googled and I saw a lot of town warrants pop up, including my hometown, and it, and I kinda cobbled their language, if it's something that you think needs to be done.
What does this do?
The, the peg grant money, public education government channel money that charter gives to the town has to go, has to, you have to adopt this legislation in order for the money to go into a segregated account. Otherwise, that money will flow into the general fund.
And if you don't spend it in a year, it goes, yeah.
Has this happened before, we've been getting take money?
It's new, it's new requirement, it must be, what, a town must adopt this legislation by June thirtieth in order for the money not to auto, you know, be forced to flow into the general fund.
So do we put this on annual town meeting, or put it on the special?
June thought sooner would be better than later, but I.
If it goes on the annual, it doesn't need a G approval, right? It would just.
No.
It's there, once we adopt it, we adopt it, and then since it doesn't happen until June thirtieth.
She was wondering, though, if that had to be fixed for fiscal year sixteen that we're in or not. Or by doing it in May, is that just getting ready for fiscal year seventeen, but she's not sure if that has to be done in fiscal year sixteen? Oh, no, 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 thinking of a different one. No, this has to be done by June thirtieth, so yes, it could be done in springtime.
Well, and I say put it at springtime meeting.
Fair enough.
Yep.
Okay, need for action regarding an AG opinion on a special dog fund?
Yep. Do you turn any generals letter from August about what happened at annual town meeting, including that dog bylaw, which I have here? They questioned the, what, the practice of taking fifty percent of monies collected on dog licenses and putting it into that library fund. So June reads this and asks Eloise, what am I supposed to be doing now? Is that, was that the, as of August, am I supposed to stop putting fifty percent of that money into this dog fund? And so that kind of bounced around library people and the financial people today, as to June asking Scott Hawkins, too, do we have to start teasing this apart, not just for fiscal year seventeen, but sixteen?
Do we have the, do we have a copy of the AG?
Yep, it's part of that. Do you have?
I don't see the, I'd like to see the AG's comments. I mean, I think what this is saying is that we would have to, this cannot go into the special library account as a matter of the local bylaw. Those monies would go into the general fund, and we would have to appropriate fifty percent of them into the library fund, and if we did that, we'd be okay.
Right. Is the library comfortable with losing that as a dedicated set aside thing, not?
Or, or what we just do is just put it in the budget to appropriate it.
Yep.
You know, an amount equal to fifty percent.
It should just want, well, not beyond the fact of having that discussion with people to make sure that they're comfortable with it, because it is what it is anyhow.
Library isn't gonna lose it, it's just a different way of getting it.
The library had questions.
If we do the right thing.
Actually, originally, that doesn't imply that there was an issue at all, but. Actually, originally, that doesn't imply that there was an issue at all, but they had been copied on it. June wants to know procedurally how to tease it apart.
Well.
And do we have to do it effective this year? That letter, she says that since it comes in August in this year, she doesn't think this is future plan. She thinks this is immediate.
I guess, I guess I would have to look at the budget. If this amount, okay, was included in the library's budget and was voted, then we're not.
The library had its budget and it had 50% in this fiscal year, so.
In other, you know, that payment to the, to the library, if it was approved as part of the budget.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, then it's okay.
Okay.
But if it was not approved as part of the budget and just moved as part of the bylaw, then it would not be okay. You with me?
I do, I am, and on the procedure of that, June would need to, and I didn't put this on, so I don't mean to be breaking news to you tonight, but they're wondering if it was going to take town meeting vote of any sort. And I don't know the answer to that, but.
I don't know the answer to that either until I look at the budget to see if it's already been included in the, if it's been included in the appropriation for the library this year, then it is, it's done. If it isn't, and we were relying on the bylaw to move it, then it, then we would have to, I think, have.
Okay, so is this dog, dog licensing?
Yep.
Receipts, so it's part of a, it was voted in Article Four, dog licensing, maximum amount spendable $600, 50% of dog fees collected uses.
So we voted it, yes.
Are you just looking at the separate article?
We voted it in Article Four at the annual town meeting.
Is this the same thing we're talking for?
Yeah.
It is, okay.
Sources of receipts and use of funds, 50% of dog fees collected.
We're good, we voted it as an article.
Well, 50% of that, I'm sorry, that's the town clerk.
Right, that's separate, that's different.
That's the town clerk, but there's also a library dog fund.
Right.
Which is a separate special fund.
Right, and what I'm saying is.
Yes, and so we got receipts, transfers from, so it looks like they spent, well, they had $2,000.
Right, but I'm looking, I mean, there would, the way I'm reading this is there would have had to have been a vote.
By the town.
By the town.
Well, let's see what else is in here. I think we normally, don't we normally vote that as part of town meeting? It's one of the articles?
No, the town clerk part is the regular part of the front end of an annual town meeting warrant.
I think you would have to go and look at the budget.
With library?
Because this money, this says is fundamentally general funds, okay? So if that amount was included, let's say it's $600.
In their vote.
Was included in the appropriation, then it's been appropriated.
Right.
Right.
If it somehow is not in that and we're transferring it separately, that's when we have a problem.
Do you have the line out of the library?
The library is, under culture and recreation, it's 610.
610.
And then if, we should sort this out because we could throw this one on the, on the special if we needed to. Yeah, this doesn't really tell me that if, okay. All right. Oh, okay. It's, it's listed here as additional town appropriations. So if it is listed at that, then we voted it. It's $2,029.30.
Which looks like.
And that came out of the general fund?
Mm-hmm.
Well, it comes out of the dog licensing money, right?
No, that goes.
We calculate how much the dog licensing money is, but what this says is, these are, it's really general fund monies. So if it's general fund monies, it's okay. If we keep, I mean, if what we decide is we want to keep a record of the dog licensing fees.
Right.
And we want to appropriate 50% of that to the library, that's okay. That's, you know, that's a policy, but we actually have to appropriate it.
Which we did.
Which we, yes, apparently did, because. It is listed here. I'm not sure we did, you know, because it's listed here, it says, we voted on 124,690. And then it says additional town appropriations, which is very hard to understand what they mean. But if, again, it has to be, so let's, do we have the library line in the budget?
It's just two lines, it's just.
What, what's the amount that?
Wages, part-time, and expenses.
What's, okay.
Which one do you want?
Wages?
$100,074.
Okay. And then expenses?
$25,957.
$25,957. Okay, and that's what we, that's, that's what we appropriate, okay.
That was the recommended budget.
Okay. It appears then as if that, because the, it appears that that was then included in that, in that budget line. So we appropriated the amount, looking at this. They requested 120, and you know, it may be on the 50 hours of notes, there was some adjustment when, when the final budget. But the total of, the total that was requested, including the dog, so called dog tax, was 126,769. So if we appropriated that amount, then we've appropriated it. If we appropriated 124,690, so I guess we just have to get a calculator and see what we did. All right. Okay, so their, their appropriations were, you said 100,000, right? Seventy-four?
$100,074.
Seventy-four, okay.
At $25,957.
Okay, plus $25,957 equals. Plus, it was 25, sorry.
$25,957.
Something went wrong here. Let me write this down. 174 and 25,957?
Yes.
Okay. I don't know, no, I mean, it keeps coming out to 36,000, I don't know. I'll just do it here.
Well, you know, Article Nine says deceive the town will vote to transfer some of money from the Anahunt Fund to the library account and further to authorize the acceptance of any other monies from various sources to the library account. It does not specify the sources, but it says a general. And to authorize the acceptance from various sources to the library account.
Yeah, all right.
I can't find where this, what the, and the previous town meeting doesn't seem to have.
Okay. It appears here as if they appropriated more than the amount that was requested, including the additional.
Well, they do have that library dog fund, which is a receipts reserved for appropriation account. Which they, well, this is the balance.
So we appropriated it apparently.
Somewhere it gets money.
Mm-hmm. Maybe I can put this on my, thank you.
Yep.
Again, the point is there has to be an appropriation of that amount of money. And we can ask June too, if she, is this, this was a printed off copy, so it's not an original?
Yep, no. All right, so we don't have the final wording, but in the previous 2014, they voted unanimously to transfer the sum of $50 from the Anahunt Fund to the library account and to appropriate from the library dog fund, the sum of 16,500.
Okay, that's it. If we, I mean, if we had that kind of appropriation, we're good.
Okay.
Because basically, the library dog fund is just keeping track of that. And then we have a bylaw that says that we'll vote that, we'll appropriate that. And if we appropriate it, we've appropriated our general funds.
So the whole issue with the AG there is a non-issue.
I, I think it should be, again, as long as we appropriate.
Right, which we've.
Those amounts, and it appears that that's what we've been doing. Okay. All right, miscellaneous correspondence?
Oh, I had, well, no.
What did the LSP, what did it mean to you? Do I read it through and have they not been proper?
It sounded like they were sending dirt without the correct reports attached to it.
No, nobody sent dirt, this is an approval to send dirt.
Well, I mean, the dirt that they wanted to send didn't have the tests that were necessary.
Correct, and so he's requested that they either provide the additional tests or it's not qualified, so.
Sounds like funky dirt to me.
And that, and that holds, that holds them up further. It's their problem, their engineers' problem.
No, I mean, we are riding by the.
We were supposed to do four days, within four days have a double check on their.
I think it's five, but nevermind, you know. Yes, we, we responded in a timely manner.
Sure.
And we're applying the correct standards and.
Okay, that's where we are.
So what's the school central office surplus furniture notification?
They have a bunch of desks and they told town offices, anybody need any of these pieces of equipment, contact the central office.
And did they send it to everybody in the?
I forwarded it to all the different town departments.
Okay.
I don't know if anybody was interested or not, but we passed it on.
Okay.
Okay.
And planning board flyer, this economic development forum, is this the one that's in Worcester at the central?
No, this is the one that they got the use of the bulk permit number three. They're just copying us to show us how they actually.
The flyer that's going out?
Yeah, that's the one.
Okay.
So what is it, is it Berlin putting it on, who's putting it on?
Berlin Planning Board.
Oh, they're putting on this.
That forum, yep.
So economic development, it's going to be about what we want in development or that?
What we don't want.
What we want and what we don't want, actually.
Right.
They will, it's Tuesday, November 10th at 7:00 PM. Brown Walker planners will present the findings and recommendations of the economic development study, the most recent element of the town's master plan, and facilitate a community discussion. Okay?
Yep.
All right.
What's the next one, the public record requests from the town clerk's office?
Just that she received one looking for all the payroll, not all payroll, but all salaries.
This is from that newspaper again?
It doesn't, his return address is just, it looks like a personal email account, but yeah, it looks like, the way he crafted his email address, it says BOS, like he might be doing this to a bunch of towns. Who he is, I don't know.
Okay. So Kay.
Which is what?
Nikki Songas EPA Brownfield assessment.
Mm-hmm.
Is, now, we have that. Tolman property that nobody wants to look at. Is this something that we might be able to get a grant for without getting involved in it?
Probably not.
The town has to have ownership of it, but I mean, I don't know if it's.
I mean, I don't know how bad.
Dennis told me that they're paying the taxes off, they're trying to keep it.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
Okay.
If I understood him correctly.
All right, well then.
And I suspect, I mean, we're talking, you know, very minor.
Yeah, yeah. It was just a thought there.
Fuel oil spill side. Are we going to get a Brownfield's grant about that?
No.
It was a thought. So what is Berlin Landing?
It's a development on Crosby Road and they put in four lots, planning board approved it.
Is this the old airfield?
Yeah.
Okay.
Not where the airfield was, but further down. And they configured the lots, they met the zoning laws, and then they went to the Conservation Commission, they met the wetlands laws, and then they went to the Board of Health and looking for variance on a new lot. And a group of us felt that no variance should be given on new lots, but nevertheless, the science was there to show that it was not a real threat to the health and waters, so the Board of Health granted it. And this person that wrote the letter was quite upset, and I kind of agree with her, but accepts the fact that life is life. It's all done, fate of complete.
Okay. And what did the accountant have to say about the FY17 personnel classification grid update?
Okay. She, it would be, she would be happy if, if we wanted to split this, it was fine with her. I had suggested we could add here, if we were going to add in the colos to this, or not, we could put a page break here and put guidelines for other hourly and salaried officials. And then it would be just consistent with our budget letter, basically.
Okay. Do you want me to do that for next meeting?
Yeah, she, she said that was fine with her.
Okay.
That was one. The, she is going to resubmit, we talked also about the sick pay.
Right.
And there were really two things, one of which we weren't focused on. There are some contracts that have a buyback of sick time. It's limited, you know, it's limited and it doesn't roll over the way, you know, some towns do. But she was really looking for two things. One thing is if somebody, you know, can foresee the need to replace somebody, that should be in there. And the amount of any buyback.
So if somebody was leaving, she wants to know what the maximum would be that they could get.
So she's going to redo that and resubmit that.
Okay. That makes more sense.
Yep. She put some other questions to me about whether the fire chief notably, but maybe some other salaried employees had to categorize things as sick days. And I have to look into that, but, because I just talked to her about it on Friday, so. Okay?
Yep.
That was it.
Okay.
Any, I don't suppose you had a chance to have any talks?
No, I was out of town this weekend and I was in New York last week. So I was, I was in Friday and I didn't manage to get in to see June, but hopefully this week, yeah. No, I think before of the last seven days since we met here, I wasn't even in town, so, yeah. And one of the other days was Sunday, which you can't expect, I got you on anyway. All right?
Okay. Okay.
Any, any other matters to be brought before the meeting?
Who will we adjourn?
My second.
Okay, take a vote on that, all in favor, aye.
Aye.